City Council Candidate Corner. My name is Heather Johnston. I'm the Executive Director of the Data Point Chamber of Commerce. This candidate corner is a partnership between the League Women Voters, Capital Straddle Valley, Data Point Civic Association, the Data Point Chamber of Commerce, and the Data Point Times. We'd like to start off with thanking the city for allowing us to use the venue. With that being said, I'd like to introduce Andrea Swain. She is the Senior Editor for the Data Point Times, and she's going to introduce the candidates.
Tonight, we're pleased to have all nine city council candidates present. I'll read their names as they will appear in valid order. Chuck Rafferty, Jody Payne, Richard Fitzpatrick, Nancy Jenkins, Joe Mueller, Roy Ryan Deibel, John Tomlinson, Alan Wixstrom, and Harold Kaufman. I'd like to thank you all for your attendance tonight, and I would like now to ask Jim Miller of the Data Point Civic Association to say a few words about the civic association and introduce the program.
All right, everybody. Good evening. This isn't the harbor, is it? It doesn't look like the harbor, but it is. Anyway, so thanks for being here tonight. The Data Point Civic Association and my board appreciate you being here tonight. I'd like to introduce Petty Van Rieken and Teyor Mavre this evening. Thank you very much.
My name again is Petty Van Rieken, and on behalf of Capital Straddle Valley League of Women Voters, I would like to thank all of you for being here tonight. Joe, you can start with your two minutes.
Well, good evening, everybody. My name is Joe Miller. First thing I want to do is thank all of you for taking time out of your busy schedules to come and listen to our candidates tonight. I'll tell you a little bit about myself and why I decided to run for city council. My wife and I lived out here nine years ago with our twin boys, and looked around the area and decided Data Point was where we wanted to set it. So I think it's an absolutely beautiful community as well now. But when we got here, I was really concerned that we didn't have a lot of residence serving businesses or restaurants. It was one thing that we would kind of miss, and it was okay. It was a great place for him. And in 2010, when they started pushing forward with the Town Center project, I started getting really excited. I was like, finally, Data Point's going to have everything that the residents need. We're going to have more shopping, we're going to have more business here, we're going to create jobs, we're going to have restaurants. And I got very excited and was really paying attention to what was happening. And then I saw the turmoil that was getting ready to happen with the council, and I became really concerned because we have a lot of momentum moving forward, and we need to keep that going. There were some issues that you can see coming to council meetings, the councils are not on the same page. Two of the members that are there seem to be kind of opposed to each other. But I decided, you know, it's time for me to get back into this. I just, in my former life, I used to block and I was in politics, and I got out of it for a very good reason, and I did it because I liked it and I thought it was a dirty business. And I was sitting around, and my wife said, Joe, when are you going to get back here? And I said, you know, this is the time. Been here long enough, I love this community, and I decided it's time to not only promote Town Center in terms of making infrastructure build, but working on finding the right businesses to move into the community after they start to develop. So that's a little bit about why I wanted to run. At the end of here, a little bit more about where my qualifications are. I'm number five on the ballot, and I hope by the end of the year you won't give it up. Thank you.
It was my honor to work for you as a city council member from 1994 to 2002. During those eight years, we accomplished a tremendous amount, from a water treatment facility at Salt Creek Beach to developing a senior center. We started a youth board for our young adults so that they would have a voice in government. We defeated the airport to help to our own. We arrived at a consensus on the headlands. We purchased the city hall, and we helped the Ocean Institute purchase and name the Sierra Spirit Data Point as a floating ambassador for our city. We built the sports park at Dink Hills High School. We built parks for the kids in Creekside Park and Shipwreck Park. We built an animal shelter with the help of St. Clemente. I helped give birth to this city in 1989. I was the first chairman of the first planning commission. I served on the first Orange County Fire Authority Board, and I was Vice Chair of the Footy Hill Eastern Order. I was on the Board of Directors of the Ocean Institute for eighteen years. I was on the Board of Directors of the South Coast Medical Center and the Capital Straddle Valley Institute. I helped give birth to the historical society and was president of the Data Point Civic Association and responsible committee of city. But that's all in the past. What about the future? We need to complete the Lander District Town Center plan as it has been designed. We need to build a skateboard park for the kids. I proposed we build it on the thirty acres of the water district site. We need to develop a specific plan for Doheny Village and Coast Highway along the whole fence beach. We need to reestablish our cash reserves and continue to operate our city in the same fiscally conservative manner we did from its inception, so we do not incur any debt and we can continue to pay as we go. I have the experience, both locally and regionally, that no other candidate on this panel has. I will be able to hit the bricks running and will not have to suffer the learning curve. I'm the old man in this crowd, but I have the energy of the youngest and the creativity of the most experienced. I hope to get your vote, not last on the ballot, but on first in the hearts of day of morning. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jody Payne, and I'm an eighteen-year resident of Dana Point. And I have to say that I haven't given birth to children. Three girls, two of them are at Dink Hills High School now, one is at the Berkeley, having a wonderful time at Cal. As a vegan and having a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful time. My background is in education. I'm a writer, a teacher. I currently have my own business with my sister. We run an internet publishing company for teachers, so I provide everything I love: kids, teaching, writing, and having a business at Luxe World, a business of my own. What's important to me for Data Point? It's exactly what's important to you. My focus is what you want. For some of you, you might live in Hyatt Bell that talk to my family. They live next door to us over a living facility, and it was causing a lot of problems for them. That's the most important thing that's going on. In the Miguel Shores, it might be too much parking at Sea Terrace Park during festivals. It depends where you live. Capo Beach has issues of all their own that are very important. Those are vital, and I will listen to you. When I first got involved with the city, it was ten years ago for the exact same reason. I live near the trailer park that's now being locked, but is in the process of being developed, and I was concerned what's going to happen. And so I got involved. I was down there walking it with the planning commission, and I stayed involved. And then, what do you know, we had a hotel come about several years ago. I've been involved in that process for some years, and things keep on going, Town Center. And I found that I loved it, and I found that I could make a difference with my voice, and that's a pretty powerful thing. And then I found other people, people in this room right now, who have spent a lot of time sitting in these chairs just recently, in fact, like yesterday or before. We spend a lot of time here watching what happens.
Ready? I want to get cut off too early. Anyway, how's it going, everybody, thanks for coming out? My name is Roy Ryan Deibel. I go by Roy because that was my grandfather's name. My name is actually Roy Reddell, the fourth. I'm a fourth-generation South County local. My great-grandfather came to South County in 1927. My grandfather was heavily involved with the chamber, with the Freemasons, with an entire collection of community organizers, and that's where I felt I needed to get in based off my family history. I come from, working in the action sports industry for the last twenty years. I've recently moved into the insurance business, and it's given me a great reason to get involved with my town. And all my customers, all my friends, all my constituents, all the people here around the community, and it's driven me to really focus on what's important for my town. And I see three major objectives when I get elected. I want to make sure that the developers maintain the standards set forth in the Town Center Plan. We have some really good guys who have put a lot of time and effort into this plan. They're sitting here in this room right now. I want to make sure that unless they have an amazing reason, that they are stuck with the rules set forth by this committee. Also, it's really important to me that their kids are focused on. I'm absolutely focused on a skate park for our community. It might not mean a lot for you, but think about your granddaughters and friends and family who really want to be a part of this. Finally, there's a prescription drug and heroin epidemic going on. Everybody knows someone who knows someone who's overed or died from this recently. I want to work hard through the help of our officers and our chairs for trouble to wipe this out. I'm really local here. I really want to focus on what's best for our town and our people. It's in my family history. It's in my blood. I'm here for you, the residents. I have absolutely no ambition of moving on to supervisor and, you know, government. I'm not going to be the guy who's here for you, always ready to take your questions on your app. So thanks very much. It's been important to be with you today.
Good evening. I want to thank all the organizations who worked together to promote this event tonight. My name is Nancy Jenkins, and I'm number four on your ballot. Currently, I'm on the Arts and Cultural Commission for the city of Dana Point, and previously, I was on a subcommittee for grants. In addition to that, I've been a resident for twenty-three years, and when I retired, I had four goals. One of them was to get involved with the community. And in doing that, I've been on many boards for the nonprofits. I'm very active on the board for the Fifth Marine Regiment Support Group. And so consequently, I go to many of the events in town, since I'm working with all the volunteers. I'm well aware of all the traffic problems. What I've enjoyed most about this opportunity to run for city council is really walking in the neighborhoods and talking to all of you, the management commissions, because I see a lot of familiar faces here, and having all this firsthand. This is a pivotal time. There are three openings, no incumbents, to run for the city council. So it's your decision what direction you want your community to go in the future. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I want to thank the League of Women Voters, the Data Point Civic Association, and my favorite, Data Point Chamber of Commerce. I've been a chair member since 1996, and I'm a board for the last four. My name is Alan Wixstrom. I'm number eight on the ballot, and I am a twenty-eight-year resident of Dana Point. My wife and I will be celebrating our twenty-seventh wedding anniversary tomorrow night. I was very thankful, and is not this evening, so we'll have a nice little evening tomorrow night. And our daughter went to Dink Hills High School, and Mr. Kirby, her first musical inspiration teachers here in the audience this evening. I started my web design agency here at Dana Point in 1995, and have nearly two decades of business experience. I am a no-nonsense leader who will see our city operate in a businesslike manner, and I will be fully accountable to you. I'll help retain our small-town charm and outstanding quality of life. I will work tirelessly for safe, healthy beaches at Dana Point, Capital Straddle Beach, and Monarch Beach. I was voted 2009 Citizen of the Year for work I did over at Dink Hills High School as president of the social foundation, South Orange County School of the Arts, raising over $400,000 for arts education, along with the rest of our board. It was a team effort for sure. And I've been on the board of the Data Point Fifth Marine Support Group for the last six years, and director of the Data Point Chambers, I mentioned before, a commissioner on the Data Point Arts and Culture Commission, and last year was president of the Monarch Beach Sunlight Rotary Club. I've been volunteering for the last eight years. I love Dana Point. I love it so much. I love all the citizens here. I love the people who come visit, the people like me in the harbor, just some of the best people on the planet, people who come here from all over the world. And I want to represent you as your leader. Thank you very much. Number eight on the ballot, Alan Wixstrom.
Good evening, everybody. My name is John Tomlinson, and I want to thank you for coming out and joining us this evening and hearing what you all have to say. I've been spending my summers here since 1967. My family and I moved here in 2005. I will do that. My education, experience, I'm a small-business owner, leadership in volunteer nonprofit and profit organizations, and my ability to develop consensus will serve the residents of Dana Point well for the next four years. I have an MBA from Chapman University and a law degree from Western State University. I've owned and managed my own property management business since 1999. I manage single-family and multifamily residential units, retail and commercial office space. In my business, I feel accomplished when a former tenant comes to me and says, I want to rent your place again because you treated me fairly and kept up the bill. I also have a development background, and I've developed multifamily and single-family residential projects. I understand the development process and what it takes to develop a great community project. I'm currently a volunteer leader in the following organizations: St. Margaret's Church, Department Association of Orange County, Free and Accepted Masons, and the Cub Scouts. I am proud of leadership roles where I have the opportunity to teach our children to be good and honorable citizens. In fact, this weekend, my son-in-law, who's a Bear Scout, will be cooking for sixty Cub Scouts in their families. This campout will help our scouts learn the skills necessary to survive and prosper our community. I have an extraordinary ability to build consensus and focus on the problems and the issues at hand and on the personalities. All five current city council members are endorsing me for this council seat. I believe that that shows how I can bring the community together and build consensus. I will prove to you that with the above-listed skills, that I can do the job of representing the citizens of Dana Point. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, and thank you for taking the time out of your day to show that you care about Dana Point. I care about Dana Point as well, and that's why I'm running for this position. I'd like to take this time a lot to share a little bit about my experience and why I would like to have your support. Protecting the taxpayers of our city and ensuring the proper use of our city's resources should be our top priority. My entire business career, spanning thirty-six years, has been in finance and accounting. I think my unique skills sets in analyzing and protecting financial assets will benefit our city. As a city councilman, I will be a part of our city's administration. My degree in Business Administration and Economics was in the University of Redlands enabled me to be a watchdog and administrator of the city's business relationships. Our city is a vital participant in local schools, both private and public. I served for four years on a school board, providing over the governance of eighteen schools with fifteen thousand students. Like you, I recognize that education is vital to our community. As a city councilman, I will be working with other governments, advisory boards, and special districts. As an appointee to a county state advisory board in other committees, I have the unique qualifications of having had real-time experience navigating through our state bureaucracy. I will continue to stand for parents' rights, homeowners' rights, and to protect the taxpayers, businesses, and retirees. Our vision for our future is outlined in the Town Center Plan, and needs to be protected and fulfilled to the benefit of Dana Point citizens, not special interests. We need to be smart about traffic congestion, partner, and promote our coastal community atmosphere. And finally, our safety and security is vital, and therefore, we need to continue to support our local law enforcement. My biography is available on my website, check out on datapoint.com. I hope you'll look at my extensive background and see that I'm the guy that you can count on, that has the experience, that will be there for you, on to your voice, and I appreciate your support. I'm number one on the ballot. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Richard Fitzpatrick. I want to tell you a little bit about who I am and my life. I went to UCLA where I earned a degree in political science. After that, I went on to San Clara University where I earned a law degree. After graduating from law school, I put out my own shingle where I really got my first taste of what it's like to run a small business. After that, I joined a construction litigation firm where I worked for two years. And then, at age twenty-nine, feeling the desire to get a little something back, do more than just look out for myself, I went down to the recruiter's office, what we call the officer selection officer, and I joined the United States Marine Corps. I did two tours on active duty in the Marine Corps before going into the reserves. While on the reserves, I did mobilize three times. During one of which of those mobilizations, I was employed to Iraq with a infantry battalion in Mark Province. Unfortunately, I think we all know it's bad news today. A public conclusion of my third mobilization, I moved my family to Dana Point where I once again put out my own shingle, practicing a pellet law. I have an office over at Capital Straddle Beach in Doheny Village. I also still adrenaline reservist in the Marine Corps, and was recently promoted to Lieutenant Colonel. And I'm running really for the same reason that I joined the Marine Corps. I love this community, and I want to serve it. I also have a wife and three young boys, five, two, and four months, and I'm concerned about what the city's going to look like for them as they grow up in this city. I also, as a small-business owner, want to make sure I do everything I can to support and enhance small businesses. And lastly, I'm one of the people that believes that character matters in our elected officials. I look forward to speaking with you tonight and earning your vote. Thank you for that opportunity. Once again, my name is Richard Fitzpatrick. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to have our first question. And I'll give you the topic, which I've already heard some of you talk about. It is Town Center. So I'll read you two or three of the questions, but they're more or less the same thing. First of all, it says, "Staff appears to feel that the Town Center Plan is no longer appropriate for 2014 Mbiom. Do you agree, and what are your thoughts?" And another one was, "Do you think we should stay or uphold the Town Center Plan?" And it says, another one says, "Data Point has invested $20 million for the Town Center Plan. Will you support the plan's implementation without allowing significant variances such as four-story or advocate advocating rezoning changes?" I know there were a lot there, but people are concerned about the plan and want to understand. So we'll start with Harold.
Thank you very much. I would have stood up for the introduction, but it doesn't make any difference if I'm standing up instead of you. Town Center is the central issue probably of this whole campaign. We spent a lot of time developing Town Center and the Town Center Plan, and I think that the committee that did the job did a great job, with the exception of, I don't like the traffic. My idea was different, but they didn't listen to me when I talked to them. I believe that the staff, the city staff, has a job. Their job is to look at what a developer wants to do and try and see if that fits within the parameters that have been laid out according to the plan. I think the staff is doing a fairly good job. I think they made a couple of interpretations that were not really correct, and when they were questioned on it, quite honestly, they backed off. I think developers come in and they want to maximize their profit, and they're going to look at the best way that they can do, what they can do with a piece of property in order to do that. I don't want to allow variances. Yes, I'll stop. I do not want to allow the variances if they're not warranted, but there are some situations where we have to make some kind of compromises, and I think we need to do that.
I want to be very clear how I feel about the Town Center Plan.
Louder.
Is that better? Okay, great. I want to be very clear. I love the Town Center Plan. I was sitting here a few nights ago when we had, I think Kirsten Remus is here now, get out and talk about what exactly is in the Town Center Plan. It's a beautiful plan that needs to be implemented as is. That doesn't mean that we come back and rezone to change it so that it no longer is valid. I like the forty-foot limit. I like the restoring limit. There's a reason why we have that. It was in order not, it was in order to give the retail and the commercial on the bottom floor a little extra room because they needed higher ceilings. That's it. It's not complicated. We stick with the Town Center Plan as it is. It's good. We need to give it a chance. These developers are the first ones out the gate. And why should we be changing it for them? Town Center Plan is good for residents, it protects our property values, and it's great for developers. They know where they stand, if the planning department will support it.
Okay, the curly shuffle of microphones here. Town Center Plan, I haven't heard of it. I missed that one. No, actually, obviously, it's a big, important thing here, and, you know, even something as loved as the Constitution, we like some amendments. Turns out, we decided slavery, maybe that's not a good idea. Turns out, hey, we should let women vote. That's a pretty good idea, too. I'm not saying that I don't agree with the Town Center Plan. I think forty-foot is a great level, and I'd really like to see the majestic development project fit within the confines of the plan. I'm looking at how it's laid out, and first of all, I hope most of the people have a good idea of what it is. If not, you should be on the city website checking out the specifics. I consider myself pretty informed when it comes to our city, and I even have problems figuring out all the ins and outs. But let's look at it. If it doesn't really meet a hardship request, then it really shouldn't need a variance. Period. We have a developer come in with projects just behind Lisa Burges. She did a great job. So, thank you.
Town Center. I have the privilege of sitting in the audience for many, many of their meetings. I support their plan. I wanted to continue. I wanted to finish. I would never stop it. I too believe in the variances, that we should have it at three stories and then we should have it at forty feet. Now, I've been talking, as I mentioned in my introduction, to a lot of people at the town. I've met people who say that they just don't even want any change at all. But then, when you talk to them, they all want to do some change in their house. And we talk about the fact that there are guidelines, and those guidelines are there for a purpose. The majority of people that I've talked with want a coastal feeling in our city. They don't want high-rises like they have in other coastal cities. And so I think this is what the essence of whoever's on the council needs to support and continue. So we have a town that has a little bit warm style, that's a little bit cleaned up, and we have a lot of thriving businesses and people. Thank you.
My business is in the Town Center. I have had business there for nineteen years. The plan is sound, and we're moving forward with the public portion of it, and now we're feeling private development will come into play. We've got master plan guidelines. They're very simple, pretty straightforward, the finest architectural quality, good environmental design, and make sure you follow those master plan guidelines of forty feet and three stories. It's pretty simple. When I am elected as your council member, I will enforce those rules. As Harold stated earlier, there are times when topographically things need variances. So on a case-by-case basis, we can certainly look at those, but three stories max, and a story. Thank you.
I've developed projects before, and it's always easy to play by the rules and not ask for variances and special considerations. It's more streamlined, you keep your business ongoing. You don't have to go in and ask for special things, so I think it's, the rules are there. They had over thirty-six meetings in a number of years to develop the plan. We need to stick to it and follow the rules, and everybody's having a good time, and it's what they want. And hopefully, the projects are good for the community and good for the developer as well. Thank you.
I too have a very strong advocate for the existing Town Center Plan. Like I said, a lot of people spend a lot of time, some of them here, they've spent time on that, over a million dollars. Guidelines were established, criteria were there, and also, things like parking, the plan called out for parking to already be done prior to the construction, what's happened there. So there's a lot of things in there. As a councilman, I would want to look and see what the city is supposed to be doing as part of our plan already, but we also need to make sure that the planning department adheres to what those rules are. We can't be changing things now. You all know what they were supposed to be. You voted for it. You want to have the plan in place. The variances are very specific, forty feet, three stories. Majestic, I voted on the record against their plans. They're going to the city council on an appeal. I'll be there voting against it. I hope some of you will be there as well to also support the Town Center Plan.
As I mentioned in my introduction, I'm an attorney, which makes this question simple to me. We implement the Town Center Plan according to
We implement the Town Center Plan according to the rule of law. Now, what does that mean? The Town Center Plan is essentially the law for the land use and development of that area. So it tells us what the requirements are and what the limitations are. Now, there is one thing to keep in mind about implementing the rule of law. It's not simply, "I'm for variances, I'm against variances." The proper way to look at this is on a case-by-case basis. The state legislature has passed a law regarding variances. They've recognized that there is a policy reason that sometimes variances can be allowed. So having said that, you need to look at each project on a case-by-case basis. If you didn't do that and make the argument that if we grant variance for the first project, everyone else will walk along, then the first project will never happen, and there would be no development of the Town Center. Thank you.
You know, the Town Center is what really got me interested in running for city council. And part of that question was, "Are you willing to change the codes?" And I just want to point out that we had to change the codes to develop the master plan. Previous building kind was 35 feet, we had to go to 40 feet. So to say, you know, "Don't ever be willing to change codes," I would think that's a good place to start, because without, you know, progress moving forward, nothing would get done. So I'm not saying we should change them to help the current developers get their buildings in. What I'm saying is, we can't be so close-minded is to say, "In the future, we may have to do some changes to the codes." Now, let's talk about the Town Center itself. I'm absolutely for this project. I think the codes that are in place right now are fine, and we need to adhere to those. Again, I wouldn't expect nothing less from a developer to come in and ask for them.
Okay, we have quite a changing topic here. Topic, it has to do with the homeless here in Dana Point, so I'll reach the question. The city has faced the issue of homeless living on the streets throughout its history. Up to now, the issue has been ignored, thinking it'll go away, and it hasn't. What is your thoughts on how we can confront this matter that benefits both the citizens, businesses, and the homeless? And we'll start.
It is a big issue. It's an issue for us all. None of us like to go into a business and be asked for money every single day. I personally have had homeless encampments on my property. It's a, we have to be vigilant in my neighborhood because of it. It's not, it's not good for the homeless, it's not good for the citizens. We do need, this is a problem we have to work on. We have to work together. We need to, everybody wants to do what's right for all people, but we shouldn't have to pay the prices as citizens today. We have to worry that there's a homeless camp and that there's a fire, might burn down the neighborhood, that sort of thing. I would love to work on it with all parties. I know down in Capo Beach, there's a lot of services. That's it. Thank you.
I'm against homeless. I'm coming out right now saying I'm not for the homeless. Now, bottom line is, I think the only candidate here who actually went on a ride along with our homeless task force, specialized officer, Officer Tobin Anderson. Last Friday night, I had the pleasure of getting to know the city a little bit deeper than I ever expected. And mostly, our homeless population consists of people who are recently homeless or kind of on that border, or people who have alcohol issues or drug issues, and then the people with mental instability and mental issues. And a lot of those drug and mental instability issues run together. And there is no cut and dry answer for this. If there was, homelessness would have been wiped out years and years ago. It's a very delicate situation. These are people. I've sat and talked with them. They all have their individual circumstances that apply just to them. Bottom line is that applying an officer specialized just for them is a great start. It's a start. But we need to increase those efforts. We need to find out what they need and how to deal with it. Thank you.
I'm gonna try this with Mike. It's great. The homeless are a problem. I think the homeless, in my own personal opinion, need some way to get food. And so I think feeding for the homeless is really key. I'm not too sure about building a structure for them, because I have read a lot of literature about homeless, there are people who have done studies, and many of them really like living on the streets unless it gets very, very cold. And I know I've had people call me in the past to find shelter for some women in particular when it was really cold. Can't believe it's gonna be cold here, but it might be in a couple weeks, we hope. And so it's a complex. I'm meeting with Heather tomorrow morning from the chamber, and she said she can only read till 10:00 because she was going to the task force of the homeless. And I ran through my line and was, "Wow, I'm glad the city is having a task force, and I'd like to be involved with it." Thank you.
This past year, as government failed to chair for our chamber, and this was an issue near and dear to our hearts, Capstrum Beach businesses, what they have gone through for over the years has been unbelievable. The defecation and urination in the back of their businesses, they're cleaning off their businesses like my backyard with my dogs. I mean, this really would have come down to. That was their biggest concern, safety and telephone's problem. And we had four town hall meetings, and was really impressed. Our chief of police came down. You're absolutely right, Officer Henderson might be your brother with that hit. He's just, he's just an amazing man. Talked to him last week and reported their ninth homeless person brought up to the rescue commission. So this is a cop. Cops usually arrest people. This guy's got the biggest heart out there, and this is the kind of community-based policing that really has to be done. It's all done on a case-by-case basis. And as your next city councilman, I'll make sure that community-based programs like that will continue. Thank you.
We have a state law called the AB-2 that deals with homelessness. And as you may recall, we had a possible shelter that was gonna go at the Kmart Center right at the southern entrance to our town off of Camino de Astrola. I was in opposition to that project simply because it's right on our southern entrance to our town and the north entrance to San Clemente. There's four of the locations have been identified in San Clemente, and they have to have a couple, a couple of fulfillments, and I believe one of them is transportation, the other one is shopping. There's a couple other ones that I don't remember off the top of my head. But if this, the shelter is built in San Clemente in one of the four other locations, then I think that will help relieve the problem here in town. And I also think it's great that we have a task force that treats the homeless as human beings and helps to get them places where they can get some help. So I'd be along with all those, and thank you very much.
First of all, I have to tell you, I don't have the answer to this, but I am concerned about it. As many of you who travel through the city at different times, you may come across homeless individuals. It's a sad situation. I'm not sure what the city has been or can do, but I can assure you that it's something that is on my list of things to, you know, look into, where we have the ability to help our people. We should try to do that as individuals and as part of the council, which represents the community. We should try to do whatever we can to help this situation out. So that's all I can tell you. If I could look into that and see what I could do to help make things better and ensure that we have safety for our people that are in town as well as for those who are without home.
I think we need to start by acknowledging that this is a difficult problem. If it were not, it would have been solved already. And there is no one-size-fits-all solution to this issue. All homeless are not the same. Some homeless are homeless because they are down on their luck, maybe lost their job, couldn't pay their mortgage or their rent. We need to have compassion for those people. We need to give them the assistance that we can. Our faith-based organizations, I think, do a fantastic job of that. Some homeless unfortunately also commit crimes, so there needs to be a law enforcement component as well addressing this issue. And also, some homeless are homeless because perhaps they are mentally ill, and that requires a medical solution. Therefore, I really think that the homeless task force that's been created is moving us in the right direction, which brings together all of those elements. Thank you.
Wow, you just kind of said everything I was gonna say. The homeless situation isn't one-size-fits-all. We need to come up with solutions, and not just as a city. We need to engage the county, the state, and maybe the federal government to come in and help us with this. This is a large problem all over our country, not just in Dana Point. And we need, we need to enlist some of those assets, people that have been studying this, and find a way that we can get out there and help people with drug and alcohol dependence problems, mental illness, or people who just want to get, be living on the street. Those people exist as well. So we need to engage other agencies that have experience with this, have them, I mean, help, have them help us study this. We shouldn't try to take this on all by ourselves. We're a small city with limited resources. We need to lean on some of our brethren out there that have extensive resources that can help us come across a problem like this in Dana Point.
There's really very little that I can add. I think Mr. McSor said it all. This is a problem that needs to be solved in conjunction with government and with faith-based and private organizations. It's not something that we can do on our own. The city is approaching it, I think, in the right way by having a homeless task force look into what is available to the city, what the, what the city really can do, what are our resources, and how can those resources be expended. But it takes a village to do this, and we all have to work together. I think that what the police are doing now is phenomenal. They're not arresting people, they're trying to show them where the services are that they need, and they're moving the people towards those services rather than incarcerating them. And that's part of what we need to do. But it's gotta be a group effort. As Joe said, it can't be something that we can do just on our own.
Here are a lot of consensus, all of you. The next time, Rachel, we're gonna focus on the harbor. Do you see any fatal flaws of a harbor revitalization, and if so, what is it?
Fatal? I don't like that one.
I don't either.
About a hiccup. Is that a little, can I use hiccup instead? Hopefully, there's no fatalities. The harbor revitalization needs, I mean, that's an old-school harbor. Beams are literally falling from the sky on some of these buildings. It needs to spruce up. I have all of the development improvements available on my website, davelfordp.com, if you guys want to go ahead and see the mockups for yourself. But basically, the only hiccup I see is displacing a lot of small boaters. I love small boating. There's a lot of local residents who love small boating. They like tinkering around on their small boats, and we're making a lot of room for the big yachts to come in. Those are pretty to look at. And I love stand-up paddling right past them, peeking in the windows as I'm riding by. But small boaters need some love, too. Right now, we've got a huge boat barn that's potentially gonna happen, some off-site parking going in, the water's disperately. There's no permanent, real solutions for that, so it's kind of a give-and-take trade. We'll see what happens. Hopefully, when the time comes, I'll get in and make some paddling.
Thank you. Doggone, I left my crystal ball at home. So I don't know what the fatal flaws are, but I do know that I am most familiar with the land side application in the harbor, and I'm looking forward to it, because I think of those termites that are holding hands, and if they stop holding hands, it might all come tumbling down. So the sooner we get on with it, the better. And also, because I enjoy going down there myself, and will enjoy the "sprucing up," it was called. One problem that I've heard amongst the people is the height of the boat barn. Some people really have a fear that that will impinge upon their views, and it will be a little overpowering for what the rest of the harbor will look like. But other than that, I've heard no problems with the land side, and people are looking forward to it. Thank you.
I have made many public comments in favor of the Orange County Dana Point Harbor revitalization project. It's sound. It's gonna be awesome when it's done. The challenge in five years that we're gonna have to wait during construction, driving around to try to get to Jim's place for breakfast, trying to make sure we don't hit any bulldozers or anything like this. Maybe that's the fatal flaw is that you never know, be the construction time. But that's just part of construction, part of the growth part. Boat barn wisely was removed as part of its own project, and that needs to go through the scrutiny process of our planning commission. I like the concept of the boat barn. I don't know if you've done a lot. I was a 13-year boat owner, sold it last July, greatest day of my life. I really enjoyed it while I had it, but it was time. And the challenge with boats is that it's like anything else, after a period of time, you just kind of ignore them, and they just sit there, and they sit there, and they sit there. And if you go through the yacht right now, that's what most of the boats are doing, they're just getting old, and boat barn will keep them covered nice.
Well, I've personally used the harbor facilities a lot, from baby beach to kayaking around, to watching the pirate battles with my kids, and it's a great place. I frequent the restaurants down there. It's gonna take five years to get it built and done, but I think it'll be a great place. And we have to work in conjunction with the county supervisors on that project, so it's real important to keep a close relationship with them. In my opinion, the harbor is the jewel of South Orange County, and it's a great place for every, all of us to use, and I hope we continue to enjoy it, and the next five years sees a lot of improvement, and we can really enjoy the facilities down there. Thank you.
Right. I'm kind of looking forward to the revitalization as well. One of the points about Dana Point is the harbor, and I think providing for the revitalization and for the new changes for the lock-on boardwalk, I think will be very important. But as far as the fatal flaw goes, maybe with the current businesses and having to go through the construction, it may have some impact there, but I think in the long run that it will definitely be a big plus. I think $140 million is supposed to be spent on the whole program. But the boating thing has been taken care of, so traffic's gonna be a little bit of an issue, but I do think that the end's gonna be a very good project that will help the towns of Dana Point.
The flaw that I see is that Dana Point is able to grant permits for land side development, but this is really a county project. And what that tells me is that there's too much government involved here. What is going to happen to the boaters if we move forward with the revitalization? Which I should add, I believe we do need to move forward with the revitalization. The harbor's 40 years old, and it needs to be updated. But we have to take into account that the county is responsible for building the boat barn and funding it. What if they don't come through with that money? A solution's going to have to be found. We're going to need to work with the county to make sure that we can alleviate this problem. Thank you.
You know, I think, right that way. I mean, it's really unfortunate. Well, let me go back. I'm waiting for this revitalization project. It's time, it's time, it needs to be done. Buildings are falling down. But it is unfortunate when you go through a process like this, that all of these small boaters are gonna be displaced. They have come up with a good solution with the boat barn. It's a great idea, but again, I'll be saying that a lot of these boats sit down there, and nobody, nobody pays any attention to them anymore. So you go through a lot, you see a lot of boats that have been there a long time, they're dirty, they're not locked up. The boat barns are in place for those because they will stay covered in, and out of sight. And when the guy wants to use it, they'll put it in for him. Maybe the only big flaw is it's not a city Dana Point project. I mean, it'd be better for the city to have control of that, but let's let the county put the $140 million in first, and then we can take a look at that after. Thanks.
The revitalization, the biggest flaw of the harbor revitalization project is that the company hasn't really identified how they're gonna pay for it. But other than that, I think it's great, what we're going to do. We can't open the harbor, we don't want to own the harbor. There's no money in it for the city to own the harbor, there's just a lot of problems if you do. The law says that any of the money that's generated in the harbor has to stay in our , it can't come to our general fund, it must stay in what's called the Tygons Fund. I feel sorry for the small boaters, but you know, I think the same way when people think about what's going on in the city of Dana Point. We're not the 1970s anymore. We're moving forward. Things change. Things change. We want to make them change as little as possible. Nobody likes change, but we'd like to do it in a nice way to preserve as much of it as we can and to take into consideration what the residents are really thinking about. But we have to change. If we're not getting out, moving forward, we're dying. Thank you.
I'm excited about the harbor revitalization. I know there are concerns in Rancho Bay Estates. I've talked to residents who are concerned about the boat barn blocking their views. I like what I've seen down there so far. This day of water, and this recently, and I took a look upstairs and see those reviews, and to enjoy that was fabulous. I can't wait. I'm so glad that the city of Dana Point is not paying for it. $147 million? I don't have it. Do you? You know, we have things to take care of ourselves. We've spent a lot of money already in town center. We have a lot of other priorities. I'm glad that's not our problem. I am concerned about the kids who use the harbor, specifically the Sea Scouts. That's a fantastic program that introduces boating and sailing and all sorts of water sports to kids from all over the county, and they were in fear of losing their facilities with the harbor, but I believe that's been ironed down. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Okay. The next question has to do with the South Shores Church. So what is your position on the South Shores Church expansion? And then I got a little bit more here. How do you feel the impact of the South Shore Church backup project will have on surrounding homeowners who live close by beginning to develop over a 10-year period, not being able to enjoy living in their homes, i.e. traffic flow, noise, pollution, et cetera, and living in buildings on a known slide zone?
I have a question. I'm Chris. You were first on? Thank you very much.
Oh, you.
Just about a week ago, I had the realization that, and I'm on the city council, that project, I'm sure, is going to come to the city council because it's going to be controversial. And there are a lot of problems with the site. I think a lot of information is needed as to the extent of the building, and it's important that they have the privilege and the ability to expand because they need to in their particular congregation. But is it too big? And the land? What is the reports build on the land? How much of a slide is it? I've heard from a lot of the neighbors already that are surrounding it. Really needs to be investigated thoroughly before it is done. Thank you.
Right before we left, I was checking my email, and that's a study session for the next planning commission meeting, which is coming early next week. So study sessions are just that. They come and bring their plans, they present them to the commissioners, and they study them. And there are some serious concerns about the construction and the landslide, as far as that's concerned. But it's much too early in terms of making a decision to mitigate that and see what they're going to do. So as far as the actual plans itself, I would like to see the church as a private landowner, be able to use their property to their fullest extent under our rules. So I support the church's right to do that, but I also want to make sure that we mitigate any of the dust and landslide issues. Geology reports should be pulled as well, and that would be it. Thank you.
Well, I have to be quite honest with you. I'm not fully informed on the issue, so I can't give you a fully informed answer, but I will guarantee you that if I'm elected to the city council, I will take a good look at it and use my experience and skills to figure out, and with the community, of course, what would be the best solution for that situation. Thank you.
Right. I just began to hear about this particular project, and I think it needs to go through the process, and then we can all hear what the pros and cons are, if they're living within the requirements, the zoning, what are the issues. So until we have that, I'm not going to make any position statements, but I can point your all facts personally, and I'll take my judgments accordingly.
Well, I'm a member of the VFW. We actually hold our meetings at the South Shore Church. But what I do want to say is that I do believe that property owners have the right to use their land as they see fit. However, as I've talked about earlier, things should be done in accordance with the rule of law. We do have zoning laws for that area. Zoning laws are essentially a contract between the landlord and the resident community that if they are not granted special privileges, they will accept that limitation on the use of their property so that they know that the other surrounding landlords will also not be granted special privileges. So it is a big premature to talk about this project until it does, it is fully vetted, and goes through the process. Thank you.
You know, the South Shore Church is just like any other private landowner. They should be... They should be held up to the same regulations that any other private landowner is, just like the hotel. They have their zoning laws that they need to adhere to. The South Shore Church has its own laws that they need to adhere to. I think what's happened with the church, it's a church. People don't like to tell churches no. Okay? And so we're very, very early in this process. I know there's a lot of concerns about the dust and the landslide, but that hasn't even been studied yet. So once they get the reports together and have a chance to really look at it, that's when they have to make a determination on whether it's a good project or not, and if we need to do something about the dust and health issues, there's something we've got to look around for.
This is the kind of question that you run into when you're a city council member, and it's very interesting to try and balance the needs and wants and the expectations of people. We're talking about property rights versus developer rights. We don't know, of course, what the project's going to look like completely, and as others have said, we're very early into the process, and we need to take a look at what is exactly the main plan. But assuming that South Coast Church comes in, this is a question that might be posed, and they ask for no variances, that only what they want to do on their land is exactly what they're entitled to do on their land, but the neighbors don't like that, that's not what you can do about it. And so it's a difficult balancing act, and it's something that you have to take into consideration. We did the same thing on the Highlands. We've done the same thing in other areas of town. You have to balance with developers, or with the property owner developer has their rights to do, and what the community wants.
My campaign slogan is "residents first." And what that means for you is that you listen to residents, and I heard a lot of residents recently speak about this issue at the last planning commission meeting, wasn't it? And they do need to be listened to all the way through the project. I don't know enough about the project. I haven't seen anything yet. As everybody else has said, it's very important. It's going to... It will be a very big deal. We need to look at it very, very carefully and make the correct decision. But everyone needs to be listened to, and it needs to be a process that is fair. Thank you.
Do you really want to hear me regurgitate the same information that everybody just did? So I'm going to do something kind of wild. I'm going to show my age here and see if I can get a selfie with the entire crowd. All right. What do you guys want to do for 30 seconds? Actually, you know, let's figure it out. Let's see it coming at the planning commission. We have some of the planning commission members here. I'm very confident in what they're doing. Let's see it before we talk about it. On that note, though, I am an alumnus of South Shores Church. Went to preschool there, sent my daughter to preschool there, and I back what the church does in general. A Thai pastor is great kind. And I also want to take this minute to shout out to my beautiful wife over there in the fourth row, the good-looking blonde. How much more time do I have? I'll end it right now. Thanks, you guys.
Would you vote for a historic survey to bring Dana Point's historical ordinance into compliance with the state of California requirements in order to protect our historic buildings in the town center, Lantern District, and throughout the city of Dana Point?
Well, it's a good question, and I'll be honest, that's good. I hadn't even heard about that, so I'll do my best to look. So the point of it here is, it sounds like what we want to do is reevaluate our historic landmarks attempt. Is that approximately correct? No?
A survey.
A survey. Survey of our existing buildings. Thank you. Would I support that? Seems like a reasonable idea. I would have to research it, and I honestly don't have a very good answer on it. So I'll just be honest, I'd love to look into that first time, if I could. Thank you.
Thank you. It's kind of a buff and state historical part, because the idea sounds good, but I'd like to find out a little bit more about what it entails, about getting the survey. I know that we do have a lot of history and culture here at Dana Point, and I think it's great that we could have the opportunity to look at that, but I'd like to find out a little more about it, and when I do, I'd certainly report back to you. Thank you.
The Historical Society, I think, does a lot of work in trying to make sure we establish certain areas that I think preserving as much as we can about Dana Point and its history. However, we can do that. I support that. I'm sure about what this particular survey is, but you know, it's not going to cost a lot of money. It adds a lot of value to potential merit to help us in retaining some history, and I'm sure you're leaning toward something like that.
Well, I'm interested in preserving Dana Point's history, but this is an issue that has not been brought up before. So let me tell a little bit about my approach. When presented with something like this, I would want to read the ordinance. I want to look at both sides. I want to see the state law that we're talking about, and make sure I hear all sides of every argument before I make a decision. It wouldn't do anyone any good to simply blurt out a position tonight without being fully informed on the issue. Thank you.
Wow. You think you could stump all nine of us? Everybody sitting here is, and we're like, that's right. We haven't even thought about that. Not that it's not an important issue. Obviously, it's an important issue to preserve our history. But you know, like probably everybody else up here, I need to know a lot more about it before I can take a position on it. So you know, if I'm elected, we'll look into it, get both sides of the story, figure out what's really behind the survey, and then we can make a decision on that.
I think the score's going to be eight to one because I do understand what's being asked here. When I was on the council, we in fact put in the historical preservation ordinance, and we did a survey at the time of all the historical buildings in the city of Dana Point. But one of the things that we did that was very, very important, whether it's in compliance with the state or not, I don't know, is we said to the property owner, this is voluntary. If you want to put your property and have your property declared to be a historical property, we'll let you do that. The city will be more than happy to let you do that, but it's your choice. It's not forced on you. And I am very strong... I strongly believe that we have to continue that. I don't think we should force on any property owner the fact that his building might be historical because other people have different definitions of what historical ought to be. So I'm a big believer in this historical preservation ordinance, but only as... And I don't mind doing another survey, but only as long as it becomes optional and to the discretion of the property owner.
I agree with Harold in that the historical preservation is voluntary, and it's good for property owners to be able to make that decision. On the other hand, that's what makes us unique, are these historical buildings, and I would hate to see any of them be destroyed. I know that Dog House has changed quite a bit. There's not a lot left, but it's still there, which is nice. I know we have issues with the Dopey property at the Capitol Beach where some wanted it absolutely preserved, and the developer wanted to tear it down. I love California history. I love Dana Point history. I love those buildings. I'd love to know more, so find out exactly what this survey would mean, what the purpose of it is, and go forward with that.
Being a member of the Historical Society was a very important step for me in the recent time, mostly because it's family history for me. My family's been in South County since 1927, so most of the photos you see around town, some of my family members could point a finger at, say, I was there, part of that. My great aunt is the matriarch of San Clemente. Actually, I have a car that's a city matriarch car. Big way gets her out of parking tickets and stuff. But you know, so it is important for me to preserve the history of our town, but not just the building that's old, you know? What's special about that building? Does it have a historic value other than just being an old building? So it is important to define what that is and what we should be keeping it on our list list. Are we... Am I for another survey? Sure. How much is this going to cost? That's what it comes down to. Is it going to mean anything? The Historical Society is historic. We haven't figured it out by now, you know?
Thank you. I have to be honest, I'm on the board of the Historical Society, so I am aware of this, and we do have a survey, but it's not current enough. We need a more current survey so that we are in compliance with the law and to keep the buildings. So right now, it's kind of in limbo. So it would be an important document, but of course, it goes down to how much it would cost. Thank you.
Parking is the next topic. What are your thoughts regarding paid parking for the Strand parking lots?
Well, I've heard some things against it, but paid parking can be useful if the residents want it to keep the traffic down in their areas. You know, it's kind of a pain if you're visiting there, you can't find a parking spot, you have to pay, the quarter's out of your pocket, and you've got to put a credit card into the machine. I always worry about when I put the credit cards in the machine, whether somebody's going to get my number, I'm going to get a call from the bank saying, "Your credit card's been swiped." So those things concern me. I think that we can also look into more shuttles and things. Well, we have events in town that we have off-site parking lots, and we have a bus service too, or a parking shuttle where people can transfer it around to various events. So thank you.
Well, I know this came to the commission, and it was voted down to have paid parking, even though it's Orange County's facility. They're the ones to operate that, so they wanted to be able to find the cost of maintaining the area, but it was shut down. As a resident here, I certainly don't like to have to pay. I think we should ask some benefits here. I know a lot of tourists come back in, they don't want to pay either, so to answer the question, I'm against paid parking there. I know a lot of people in the area were also concerned that they could beat their overflow of problems in their particular area. So I think we'll see what happens there. I think it might be appealed, but my position is I'm opposed to the paid parking even throughout Dana Point.
Well, yes, the Strand parking lot does belong to the county, and they were looking to raise money to help maintain it. I'm not in favor of imposing that fee or tax or whatever you want to call it on Dana Point residents. So we go down and enjoy the beach in that area. There is ample parking there on an average day when you want to go enjoy the beach. The real issue there is, should we, parking lot have gates and restrict the hours? And that makes sense. Now, you don't want to have people parking there overnight if they're not using the beach. So that is something that makes sense. But in terms of paying to park there, no, I'm not in favor of that.
Paid parking is just another way of taxing the residents. And absolutely.
Paid parking is just another way of taxing the residents, and absolutely against that. That's just the political side. The personal side is, I live pretty close to that parking lot, and I think it's fantastic. It's the only free parking lot I know about in the area, and I think it should stay that way. I know the residents around it are very concerned that if it becomes a paid lot, people will be on the street, they'll be moving into their parking lots, their community, and that's a big issue, and that's not what drives me to say, "Don't let it make it a paid lot." It should be a free lot. It's one of the things that we have that's very unique. We can't find another free lot anywhere on the coast that I know of, so I'm definitely against turning that into a paid lot. Thanks.
Let's see. Motherhood, paying for parking? Absolutely should remain free. I'm very happy that the planning commission turned it down. I do agree that they should be able to put gates there and close it off at night, because there are some people who park overnight, and I think that's wrong. But there's so many problems with putting paid parking in there. I would not be in favor of it. Remember when they tried to put paid parking at the harbor, and they put up the gates? The screaming that was going on in the city? Coming to the city council yelling, "Why are you doing this?" We said, "We're not doing it. It's the county." Now, we want to keep it free, and we should keep the harbor free also with no paid parking there. Should there be parking restrictions, like maybe four or five hours? I don't know. I don't know if you want to do that. You have to have a meter maid going around your parking tires, but certainly it should be closed off at night.
I think that was an easy decision for the planning commission. I hate paid parking. I hated Strand. I feel like Strand is sort of our local beach. It's where we go when everybody else is going over to Salt Creek. We would have been the ones to pay the price, because we go there all the time, all year long. Tourists, they come once or twice this summer. We would be, I don't know about you, but I'm there all the time, all the time. I don't like paid parking at Strand. I don't like it in Town Center. I don't want it at the harbor. I don't like it anywhere.
Would you include going on a train? Got a nine-year-old. I've read a lot of these stories. Paid parking at Strand. This is a tough one, because I'm actually very supportive of the Surf Rider Foundation, and they're actually for paid parking at Strand. I am a Strand local. I serve Strand Beach quite a bit, and the Strand locals are for paid parking at Strand. You know why? Because a lot of them have parking stickers from Salt Creek that would translate over for that. But realistically, I can't say I'm for it. In case you didn't know, it's kind of a secret spot compared to everybody else, right? So, if we sneak down there, we keep it secret. Just keep it for ourselves. This is what kind of got me to speak up at the planning commission meeting. I begged them, "Please don't turn it into a pay lot." We have a lot of locals who live just across the street. There's some with us tonight who are adamant about it as well, talking about the carryover, about people parking in the neighborhood there. I don't want to see it there. Yes, it would create a consistent message between Aliso and Doherty and Salt Creek and Strand, but that mean we're going to pay instead of go down Baby Beach too? Come on.
This is definitely an easy one. I bet you we're all going to say, "No paid parking." But I found out that they had paid parking there before the county did, and they had the kind of, they had those meter boxes, and you'd go and then you'd get a thing, and those meter boxes, and that location went to waste. So, and they were put, you know, maybe gum, I don't know, I didn't do it, into the box. I don't know what they're worth. So, why do they want to do it again? It's really a puzzle. No paid parking.
While I made public comment against it, it's a hidden tax on our residents. In 42 years, Strand parking has been free, and this is a creeping issue with our county. The county, to their credit, is trying to get revenue out of their properties. The next would be Baby Beach, as you mentioned, maybe the Ocean Institute, or even after the harbor revitalization, I've made it really clear in my position of what I want for paid parking down there, and that would be done. So, I hope the county hears that very closely. We want to keep our harbor parking free, even though we don't control it, we certainly have influence on it, and I highly encourage you, if you like parking for free down in the harbor, to make sure your voice is heard. And again, no paid parking, really anywhere in town would be fantastic for me.
Next topic is the Dahini Village. What steps would you take, if elected, to organize a workable cleanup and enforcement of city codes? What would you, what would it take, if elected, to organize a workable cleanup and enforcement of city codes in Doherty?
Well, I think laws are there to be enforced, and if we're not doing things now, then there's a problem. So, it's one thing that we need to make sure that our entire city, if you look at all those different areas, to see where we might have certain issues. This being one of those issues, then I would think that we should put more efforts into those particular areas. For me, it's pretty straightforward and simple that we address problems, take them on, find solutions, and work towards rectifying those items. So, that would be my solution, to understand it and to add extra enforcement to help ensure that it's being taken care of.
We need to do two things. Focus on the core functions of government, and be fiscally conservative. Now, what does that mean? Being fiscally conservative means balancing budgets, keeping the city out of debt, making sure our reserves are healthy. That allows us to have the money if we need to go to the county and contract to have more officers put on the street. Secondly, when it comes to focusing on the core function of government, security, safety, law enforcement, that is one of the core functions of government. So, those two things go hand in hand. If you're fiscally conservative, you have enough money, you can support the police officers, you can properly enforce the law in that area. Thank you.
Well, I think the first thing we need to do down there is we need to start developing the Doherty Village master plan, just like we did in Town Center. That's the very first part of getting down there. And once we get down there, we can make the city aware of the issues, and make sure the police are there, and that there's a larger presence, not necessarily in more officers, but in more patrol down there. Get the code enforcement people down there. Make sure they understand what the code issues are. And to do that, that's really all it takes, until we can really find out where the issues are and study it. Do we need more officers or not? Do we need more code enforcement people or not? And I think the way you figure that out is you start with the Doherty Village master
Years ago, we had problems in the Lander Village, and we fixed them by having our code enforcement, that's when we hired our code enforcement officer. And those code enforcement officers went into Lander Village and were very, very successful at cleaning things up. We need, I'm quite honestly, not that familiar with those, that level of problem in Doherty Village. I don't think it's nearly as bad as Lander Village was when we first started. But our code enforcement officers need to continue to go down there, just like they do all over the rest of the city, and when they see a violation, they should talk to the property owner and have the property owner clean it up. We have three very, very good code enforcement officers, and they're not shy, and they do a great, terrific job. So, that's what I think we need to continue to do.
I don't like this question, because it's a vanity of interest. I really don't. Capital Beach, Doherty Village, and the cleanup, and enforcement of codes. Let's just make it really nice, the way it deserves to be, and I don't want to take 10 years to develop a plan. There's only nine owners there. Doherty Village should be a world-class destination. It's such an awesome, awesome spot that we have not been paying attention to. Let's pay attention to it, then we won't need to clean it up. We won't need the code enforcement all the time, because it will be so cool and so great. We'll go down there.
You guys getting tired? There's coffee from the coffee porters in the back. Recharge. Doherty Village, you know, how many more balls do we need in the air? Obviously, to me, you don't need to start another project when you're still, haven't even started, you know, two of them, and got those to put to bed yet. Would we like to start organizing it? Would we like some think tanks and some prospective planning? Yes, absolutely. But do you want to cut ribbon and break ground on a whole other project? Like, how many are you going to throw up in the air? That's not to say that Doherty, Capital Beach doesn't deserve it. Their residents deserve a fantastic place to live, but it's a grandiose problem. Like I said, when I did my ride-along last week, there was some riffraff going on down there. Probably wouldn't want to go for a walk with my wife down there come nine o'clock at night. Let's go by the waterfront, right? You know, there's some action going on there. We made a couple of busts, and there's some serious characters. So, yes, absolutely. The entire area needs to be revitalized. No question. Let's put a plan together, start a think tank to make that happen. But let's also finish what's currently on the burners as well, okay?
Thank you. Just recently, I've been spending a lot of time down there, and I've been talking to some of the business owners, and they've commented that it is starting to get a little better, and they have attributed it to the police services, because they're patrolling very closely. So, it's even more than code enforcement. They claim that it's because of the new farmer's market, and they thought the police wanted to. When I talked to the police, they said, "Heavens no. We know there's a problem, and so we want to make it and to clean it up." It is, needs code enforcement. It also needs the police presence, and it also needs the planning process of a Dahini Village. It again is one of the elements that it takes the whole village to take care of that.
Most of our code enforcement is complaint-driven. You got a problem with something, you tell somebody at the city, they usually get on it yesterday. It's pretty impressive. When I see graffiti in town, I take a snap, send a text, it's gone within 24 hours. That's the second one. Code enforcement down in Doherty Village is a challenge. Just driving by the liquor store today, going down Doherty Park Road, the liquor sign is like on the ground, bent and half, and I'm thinking, I don't, some of my business friends have channels just putting up a little banner in front of their business, and how that sign stays there is beyond me. I hadn't even noticed it before. But code enforcement is definitely complaint-driven, and down in Doherty Village, one of the aspects and ways of improving it may be short-term improvements with both landscaping, lighting, and so on. So, we've got some good short terms. You go to alfredp.com. I've got a very extensive write-up on what my short-term, long-term fixes are for Doherty Village. Appreciate your vote. Thank you.
I've been going to the Big Five, which was formerly Thrifty. When I was a good boy, I got a chocolate chip ice cream there for a hundred. One scoop only now, so not much has changed in Doherty Village since the time I've been there, and it's time to do something with Doherty Village. That's a great area down there. I frequent a lot of the business down there. The problems are getting cured. I think a lot of the problems come from the people that come and hang out there in the neighborhood, and I think that the police are doing a great job in fixing that problem, so I appreciate that. But I think long-term future, we really need to get Doherty Plan started, and we need to get a group of Capital Beach residents together that can tell us, that can tell the city council how they want to see the plan go, and what they need to feel that the project's good and going to serve the community.
Okay, over broader question. How would you guide our city in regards to water use in these days of historic drought?
Well, again, I'm a believer in small campaigns. I'm not interested in getting into everybody's life and telling them what to do. However, what the city can do is provide education to people how to conserve water. It's up to the individual residents to make sure that we all do our part. So, what I would encourage is that the city have outreach, education, and explanation of what the drought does to the city, and what we can all do to help conserve water. Thank you.
Concerning waters could be a very big issue for us. It obviously is a very big issue for us. It's not coming, it's here. And one of the things that the city can do is work with the water district and offer incentives to remove turf. I know some of those are out there already. Put succulent plants in, drop tougher trees. Those are the things you can do, and then educate the people about running faucets, running your shower, the faucet running while you're brushing your teeth. There's just little things like that. You have to think locally, or act locally, to handle these problems, and there's no easy solution to this. I mean, one thing you could do is start thinking about desalination plants to help alleviate the water issue. But I think initially, you have to give incentives to help people conserve water. Thanks.
Ingrid McGuire was the pioneer in trying to get people to go drought-tolerant plants years ago, and I believe that that's something that we need to continue to do. I think we need to work with the water district to collect dry season runoff and clean it up and put it back in the aquifer, or use it as recycled water. I think that we can do that as a city. It might be expensive, but we can do it in conjunction with the water district. I think we need to support the water district's efforts in the desalination plants. MODOC is in favor of it. The local agencies are in favor of it. We should do whatever we can to help them get that done, including giving them the zoning and the permits if they need to do that. It's very important that we conserve our water. We live in the desert, and we have to understand that we live in the desert. We can help do more in the area of education.
Water is a big issue in California. We all know that. I support a desal plan. I don't believe this is ever going to go away, even if we're down in the area. I would like to see the city council work very closely with the water district, and I am a firm believer in what we can do as individuals to save water. What we teach our kids, what we do in our own homes. I've got artificial turf. Looks pretty nice. I love the succulents, the drought-tolerant plants. Our HOA is going towards monitoring the water using bradwater, right? Not bradwater, but the non-pollin water for our hillsides. So, there's a lot we can do individually. Let's offer incentives if we can, just not punishment for our citizens. I think it would be a lot of fun, and good for us too.
I want to be the only candidate to say I'm against water, hands down. But actually, again, this is a tough one for me, because I really like to golf, and it's kind of tough to play golf on dirt. But as it relates to us personally, we know how cheap our water is. It's ridiculous. It's ridiculously cheap. Put it next to, "What's more important than water in our lives?" Pretty much nothing. Beer, he says. Oh, Eric? I think I heard you said beer, actually. So, to me, we're paying such a small premium for it. I think it could go up four times, and it would still be a great deal for how much we value it. Am I going to tax it that way? No. But realistically, if it was priced four times, you'd see a whole lot more conservation. You'd be seeing buckets underneath the spouts when you're taking a shower. People would get a lot more anxious on how they use their water. Realistically, conservation is key, but desalination, that is so huge. If we get that plant in there and modernize, that would be great for our town, and we're controllable around it.
Thank you. For whoever wrote that question, we're two separate entities. One is the water district, and they're the ones that are monitoring the water usage right now. And then the city has control or primary interest in the clean water to the ocean. But there's already a subcommittee called the Clean Ocean Subcommittee, and they meet the city and South Coast and interested citizens to work together, and more continued work needs to be done between the two governmental agencies. Mentioned already about desal, that's important. In our house, I have just recently gotten, do you know? In our house, I have just recently gotten, do you know that there is a program through the water district that we've changed out our valves so that we make sure that they go on the land and not on the sidewalk? How many of you see water on the sidewalk? That's wasting water. Also, we've taken out in some of our area and put in some ground cover, not artificial turf, that has very little water. So there are lots of programs, look into it. Thank you.
Desalination, it's critical. The Carlsbad Desalination Plan's gonna be coming online very soon, and it's impressive. And we live in a desert, we've got to make sure we support our water district, not only in terms of providing the various permits, but also financially. I mean, I can't think of anything more important to us than having good, clean, local water. And we've got tons of it just right outside our door, and we really need to get that moving, because it's gonna take quite a bit of time to go forward. Everybody else has said everything on the conservation and so on, and I believe we're all doing that, and I know in our household, we dropped about forty percent, but that's, you just get a sudden realization of how valuable it is. And Harold's point on the dry water runoff, I think should be also explored. Great idea, Harold.
The state just voted to fund seven billion dollars in projects for water recapture, reservoirs, for runoff recapture, for desalination plants, and water-saving programs throughout the state. I think that we should be able to take advantage of those in the next couple of years. I think the desalination plan is a great idea, but it's going to take a couple of years to come on. We can talk about drought-resistant plants and water-saving devices, but what we're really thinking about is the next drought, how we're going to face the next drought when we have more population and less resources to do it. So with this seven billion that the state is, it's going to spread throughout the state. It'll be spent in other areas, but our water's imported from other areas. Our water's imported from Northern California and from the Colorado River. So let's take towards the future and the next drought, when this is all over.
I could talk all evening about water, just because I came from a water agency that served over seven hundred and fifty thousand people, and how they're giving panels in case for people using too much water. But as it relates to the city, the city, what they can do is encourage, maybe they have only a couple of these water containers down here. I think there's awareness issues that I see throughout the city. I see, I go to restaurants, there should be, I thought I heard that there were ordinances, but I don't see ordinances being enforced. We need to make sure that our restaurants understand they're in a drought, don't serve the water. Every little bit helps, it's an education, but what can the city do? Those are the types of things that the city can do on a small scale. We can also look at recycle water wherever there's the opportunity within the city to utilize the recycled water. But the people that are responsible for, you know, the rebates, conservation programs, it is South Coast Water District, and we would want to work wherever we could to help them do their job better.
Okay, the time for questions is over. We now have one minute for you to make your pitch, or we'll start with Harold.
We need people on the city council who understand the past and have a vision for the future in Dana Point. We need to make sure that we continue to respect the wishes of our residents as we move this great city forward. I have the experience, I have the history, and I have the energy to keep us moving forward while we remember from whence we came. I'm an Air Force veteran, a member of the American Legion Foes 281, American Legion Riders 281. I'm a member of the Patriot Guard, I volunteer for the Fifth Marines Corps Group. I can't manage my papers properly. My wife is Shana, I've lived here for thirty years, and we plan to stay here. Please join Diane, Artie, Pat, Vince, Todd Spitzer, Bill Fero, Carlos Alvera, Bob Moore, Karen Correa, and many others who support my candidacy. These people have seen me in action on many local and regional issues, and they know that I have the experience of the past and the vision of the future to move this city forward. I'm Harold Kaufman, last on the ballot, first in the hearts of Dana Point.
It's nice to have all of you. What I'd like to end this with is that quality of life is everything in Dana Point. It's true of Irvine too, I suppose, but they're not lucky like we are. It's very, very special to live here. Everyone I talk to says it feels like California's best-kept secret. And we love it here, we want to keep that, and we need to do everything in our power to keep it that way. I can make you lots and lots of promises, you don't know whether I'll keep them or not. I ask you, instead of believing that I promised to support you and listen to you and do what's right on this council, is instead look at my past, look how hard I've been working for years, when nobody was watching, when I had no intention of running for city council, but just got so involved in all the processes that we've been through and all the development. So pay close attention to the Act of the Act, and hopefully you will remember Joey Payne, number two on the ballot on November fourth.
Well, thank you all for staying and toughening it out. This has been a long evening, and we should go down for ice cream at the coffee porter after this. I just want to say, you know, I just represent the new blood of Dana Point. I represent Generation Next, and your kids and grandkids, and, you know, my platforms really cater towards that. I really want to fight to get these kids off prescription drugs, off parent, give them a safe place to skate park, to escape, have a skate park that really works with the whole community. You know, I don't have the accolade of Allen, he's got like seventy-five clubs he's in, you know, I don't have the history of Harold, you know, and I don't have the money of some of these candidates either. I'm a true resident, born and bred, family history from barefoot new residents. Thank you.
I'm running for city council for two reasons. One is that I love Dana Point. I've been here twenty-three years, and I want to continue to see it as a city that we're all proud of. And the other reason is I want us to, transparency in the government, the ability for all of us to be aware of what is happening. Because to me, democracy is the fact to have open forums where you come and give your voice, where you can hear a council debate, not all in agreement, but to debate openly and have consideration on all sides before decisions are made. I'm Nancy Jenkins, I'm number four on the ballot. I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Well, this seems to be the last third-party engagement, so we're gonna go out with the bank tonight. Absolutely love this town. I've been involved for many, many years, seventy-five, I was in seventy-six, actually, just kidding. But seriously, this is about leadership for our next four years, and the vision of our town for probably the next forty or fifty years, because a lot's gonna happen in these next four years. I encourage you to Google each of your candidates' names and see what they've done, see what they've written, see how they're seen around the community, and you will see that I can bring the leadership for our town, and will make sure that I listen to your concerns, and will be glad to be available on my cellphone, text message, what have you. And I want to keep Dana Point beautiful. Remember, Allen next term, number eight on the ballot, eight is great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for taking the time to get to know me as a resident, family man, and leader in our community. The next four years of Dana Point are promising. I will use my education, experience as a small business owner, and volunteer leader for nonprofits and profits as well, to help promote this promising future. I hope to earn your vote on November fourth. Vote John Tomlinson for city council.
All of us here love Dana Point. We want you cast for voting to support our city, our neighbors, our family, and our way of life. I'm ready for office to preserve and protect our city. I'm not here for personal gain, representing outside interests for developers, or to use the city council to run for a higher office. I have financial and governance experience, but allow me to serve all of us. I'm Chuck Raffman, asking you to support my candidacy, to cast a vote for me and for Dana Point. Together, we will protect our city and help it to its best potential. I'm number one on the ballot. Thank you very much for your time.
This is an important election. As you've heard, there are three open seats. That means that a majority of the new city council will be newly elected. And while you've listened to all of us tonight, and the various positions we take on the issues, that certainly is important to remember in making your judgment in who to vote for. But it's also important to remember that over the next four years, there are issues that are going to arise that we don't even foresee yet. And when those issues are addressed, you're going to want to have a city councilman that has the leadership and character to fairly and effectively address those issues. As Marine, I will always look out and work for the best interests of the community and not my own. My name's Richard Vixorik. On November fourth, please remember, vote Vixorik. Thank you.
My wife and I love this area, this city, that's why we moved our family here to raise them. And, you know, my background is, I've always worked for small companies, I'm very entrepreneurial. The last job I held before moving out here is I secured state federal appropriations for a small educational software company. Dana Point is moving into a new era, this is uncharted ground, we've never done a project of this size before. And moving into the future, we're gonna need somebody who's creative and knows how to come up with creative solutions to all our city's issues. There are things that we're not aware of, that we can't see yet, and you need somebody that's willing, once those issues come up, and somebody who's willing to listen and lead and build consensus to benefit all of our residents and taxpayers. I think with the skills I bring and my experience from business and living in different communities around the country, I think I can provide all of those skills that we need. So remember, on November fourth, Joe Miller, number five on the ballot, and I hope I can have your vote. Thank you.
Okay, let's find out.